Welcome to tonight's meeting of the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls. If you would all like to join with me, the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note, all of the council is present. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with additions. The additions that we have on this particular agenda is a resolution for Public Employees Retirement Association for the firefighter engineer, declaration for Daniel Sweeney. Number seven, consent for the mayor's recommendation for appointments to the charter commission of the City of International Falls for submittal to the chief judge for approval. And under correspondence, the International Falls Library Board of Trustees Meeting Packet from November 13th, 2019. Councils?
Motion to approve the agenda.
With the additions?
Yes.
We have a motion from councillor Kraus for, to approve the agenda with additions. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing no question, or no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes? We have an agenda. Items for approval of minutes, our first minutes would be from November 4th, 2019. It was our regular city council meeting.
Move to accept the minutes.
We have a motion by councillor Deech.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Nelson. Any discussions, additions, corrections on those minutes? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, those minutes are approved. The next is the committee of the whole meeting that we had after the regular city council meeting that was with Department of Transportation and WSN regarding the Highway 53 project.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deech. Discussion, questions, concerns with Committee of the Whole Meeting? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, minutes are approved. And finally, we have another committee of the whole meeting, which was November 12th. And, yeah, our committee of the whole meeting on November 12th.
Move to accept.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by councillor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Nelson. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the payment of claims for the city. First one is going to be transfers of International Falls to the water fund of $5,559.67 and from the sewer fund of $4,392 to the permanent improvement fund. We're going to be transferring $66,666.66. That's coming half from the water fund and half from the sewer fund. And then capital out, reserved for capital outlay, $25,760.42. That's coming from the water fund, $19,136.17, and from the sewer fund of $6,624.25 for a total transfers of $102,378.75. Our accounts payable claims, we have claims for International Falls of $618,212, and we have library board claims of $3,669.34 for a total claims of $621,881.34. Your, I'm sorry, a motion for, to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Councillor Deech. And do we need a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from councillor Kraus. Motion, second? Do we have any discussion on the payments of claims?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No airport claims?
No airport claims this month.
This is the first time I've seen one of these without airport claims.
Yes, it happens. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, resolution passes 5-0. Next, go on to audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Come on up. I believe it's on.
Is it on? Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Anne Thompson, I work at Rainy Lake Medical Center. And today, I'm here on behalf of the Holiday Committee Parade Committee. And so, we're working on that, getting a lot of stuff ready. And one of the items that came up at the committee is, it was suggested that we have a banner to honor our previous mayor, Bob Anderson. And so, we're going to have a banner in front of the parade. And what we are looking for are two volunteers to walk that banner. And it was mentioned that we should maybe invite somebody from the council first before we seek somebody else in the public who would want to walk the banner. So, we're looking for two people. And I know you all were quite close to him, so that's why I'm here today.
Okay. Well, I think we're all, we're all interested in making sure that we can get a banner for certain. Ken, can you tell us what we would have to do to make that happen? Because it's a...
Mr. Mayor, I think she said they have the banner, they're looking for somebody to walk it.
Yes.
Oh!
Yeah, we already, Coca-Cola is donating the banner.
Okay.
So, we're just looking for two people to walk the banner.
Okay. Well, I've already committed to one float.
I am on a float, so...
That's great to hear.
Oh, just late.
So...
I might retract that then.
Is there anybody else that would like to walk with the banner?
I would, but I don't know if I'll be here.
Okay. Would you be?
I have a rotator cuff surgery Thursday. I don't think I'll be walking the banner. Sorry. I would though, I very would.
Or if you know of any recommendations of somebody that would want to walk the banner too. I mean, I'm fairly certain I could find somebody, but I'm not sure exactly who is closest to Bob, so I thought this would be a good start.
Yeah, I, that's weird. I don't, I don't know. No, I would be honored to carry the banner, but as I said, we, as soon as this started going, and I think we all are well aware that this is Bob's favorite part of year, is Christmas. And I, as soon as I found out you guys were doing it, I wanted to make sure that we had something in there we were able to work on, on a float. So, I've already committed myself, and I believe at least the three of us have for, a float. So...
Perfect.
With that being said, I guess I would lean towards the city administrator. Do you know anyone that we could reach out to from the city?
Well, Mayor, I'd be happy to do it myself, but I plan to be out of town unfortunately that weekend, so I can't do it either. I would be honored to be able to do that. I can check with staff and see if there's people that are available and would be honored to do that. I can, I can do that, and I'm sure that there will be some, so...
Okay.
Okay.
We'll definitely reach out to you to make sure that we have someone, yes?
I wonder if perhaps some of his family members might be interested?
Well, and that's why...
Yeah, we are going to have his wife and some family members also in the parade as well, and they'll be probably right behind the banner, so...
Yes, and that's one of the things, I knew that, that they were, I don't know, is it officially the grand marshals of the parade?
Carol will be at the parade, and I believe she's invited to someone for grandchildren to join her.
Yeah, I spoke with her just the other day in the grocery store, and she's apprehensively happy about this.
You're correct.
So, the city administrator will get with you some people. Well, thank you so much.
You, good idea.
Thank you. Chelsea, I can't be on the float anymore, I gotta...
All right. Anybody else in the audience that would like to come and speak to the council on something that's not on the agenda? All right, next, we are going to go to old business. We have an item from our last city council meeting. We had a request for additional quotes for the Senior Citizen Center for their furnaces and air conditioning units. Chair would entertain a motion to remove the item from the table.
So moved.
We have a motion to remove from the table by councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
He beat you. Councillor Bowler?
That's fine.
You'll get him next time. So, we have a motion and second to remove the item from the table. Any discussion? All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? All right, it's off the table, I did that different.
I missed it.
All right, so now it's before the table. We have two quotes for the Senior Citizen Center Heating and Air Conditioning. Chair would entertain a, actually, Administrator Anderson, you want to give a brief background of what we have?
Certainly, Mayor, council. I've prepared a memo that identifies that we received two quotes for the work at the senior center. And as you know, it has older furnaces and air conditioning condenser units. So, we have some concerns that if something happens, the, the product that's in place now, it's not able, we're not able to get parts for it any longer if something happens. So, we want to be proactive about replacing the existing equipment with new equipment. We received two bids. One was from Shannon's, and you see the price there was $15,495. And that did not include the building permit fee in order to put the equipment in. The second quote came from Taylor's Plumbing and Heating. That's also a local contractor, and their price inclusive was $14,750. So, we're asking that the city council consider awarding the quote to the lowest responsible bidder. And then secondarily, we're asking that you consider a lease addendum to the existing lease that we have with the senior center. And that particular lease was adopted back in December of 1997, and stipulates that the senior center is responsible for maintaining the equipment and building there. But just given the sizable expense for doing this, we're suggesting that the city upfront the expense, and that over time, we would withhold from paying them the $2,000 that we have historically paid them on an annual basis until we pay ourselves back. So, we're seeking council approval on both of those items.
So, we'll take the first, the first motion would be to award the bid to council's pleasure of Shannon's at $15,495 plus permit fee, or to Taylor's Plumbing and Heating at $14,750. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept Shannon's bid.
Okay, we have a motion to accept Shannon's bid of $15,495 plus the permit fee. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? The motion would die for a lack of a second. So, chair would entertain another motion at this time for work to be done on the senior center.
I move that we accept Taylor's Plumbing and Heating as the low bid.
Okay, we have a motion to accept Taylor, Taylor's Plumbing and Heating of the low bid of $14,750. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. With a motion and a second, we are open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Administrator Anderson, you had noted that, that the bid from Taylor's Plumbing includes the building permits?
They didn't specify that the fee did not include that permit. It's not a sizable expense, but it should be, I indicated it was inclusive.
I guess my question would be, do we have to, since it's our building, do we have to charge, basically take the money out of our left hand and put it into our right hand? Or can we waive the fees on something like that?
Historically, we've done it both ways. We don't typically actually pay, require a fee for our city building, but we still have to go over and inspect the work, and so that's something that the building official does. It's his time and...
But it is a city building, so...
It is. I just...
No?
It's an option, you can waive it if you choose to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And I would assume that we could tackle that at a later date? We don't have to establish that right now?
Well, I think we want to get the work done sooner rather than later, so if you want to approve the...
So, could I amend my motion to include waiving building permit fees?
If the second would be acceptable to that?
Okay.
Okay, so, the, the motion has been changed.
For building.
Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I guess by looking at, at the breakdown, and I know that there wasn't a second on Shannon's, but that being said, looking on the breakdown on what will be provided and what will be done, I do believe Shannon's is much more comprehensive than the other one. And for roughly a little under $1,000 difference, I think Shannon's proposal is laid out much more in detail. And I guess on that principle itself, for $1,000 to see exactly what we're getting and what's going to be done, I would think Shannon's would probably be a better investment for the city.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Administrator Anderson, your, would you have any thoughts on that?
Typically, if you have two qualified bids, it's difficult for, we would have to make some findings as to why we did not accept the lowest responsible bid. They're both licensed contractors, they're both local. The equipment, as it was, I don't have any information from staff that the equipment would be unresponsive and not appropriate for the proposed building location. So, all else being equal, I think, I think the city is typically obligated to take the lowest responsible bid.
Yes, if you look at, they're both 96% efficient also, so the efficiency is...
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing no, no additional discussion, question?
No.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries. Four for the motion, one against the motion. Next, we have to consider an addendum lease, an addendum to the lease agreement between the senior center, senior center and the City of International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Discussion?
Did anybody get ahold of Guy Johnson?
I spoke to both the treasurer, which is Deb Arnold, and to the president, Guy Johnson, and I explained the city's position on it. And both of them were very okay with the addendum change. They, they are aware of it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda. Consent agenda is to approve the 2020 licenses that were presented, which is curb appeal lawn care for a snowplow license, and forest land sales and service doing business as Pizza Barn, a restaurant license. We have an approval for travel expenses for the city administrator to attend the 2019 Baker Tilly Symposium on Bonds, Utility Finance, and Affordable Housing on November 21st, 2019, at the University of St. Thomas in St. Paul, Minnesota. And our addition to our agenda this evening, the Public Works, Public Employees Retirement Association firefighter engineer declaration for Dan Sweeney. Your, uh, motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second? We have a second by councillor Deech. Question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries. New business. All right. First, we have a request for year 2020 license renewals that include, that may include tobacco or liquor applicants as presented. First link, first one we have is Apple Green Midwest doing business as Freedom Value Center 2325, looking for cigarette license, fireworks license, 3-2 off sale license, gasoline pumps license, and restaurant license. Apple Green Midwest doing business as Freedom Value Center 2337, a cigarette license, 3-2 off sale license, gasoline pumps license, and restaurant license. The Elks Club 1599 for a club license, a restaurant license, and a Sunday liquor license. Family Dollar Store 30058, a cigarette license. Forest land sales and service, a cigarette license and gasoline pump license. And Quarters doing business as Quarters Amico and Car Wash, a cigarette license and gasoline pumps license. Your pleasure with the renewals for these licenses?
Move to approve.
Councillor Kraus, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Nelson. Discussion?
He's not here.
Okay. Administrator, do we have any issues that we should know about before we approve these licenses?
Uh, none. They wouldn't be, we would have pointed that out to the council had we had any.
Fair enough, thank you. With no other discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a new business license. This is going to be for Orton Motor Incorporated doing business as Orton's International Falls Senix, formerly Randy's Tire and Auto Repair. They're looking for a cigarette license and a gasoline pumps license.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by councillor Kraus. Discussion?
Mayor, is that for both?
Uh, I was just doing the first one first.
Okay.
Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is to approve the 2020 license for Orton Motor Incorporated doing business as Orton's International Falls Senix, a cigarette license and gasoline pumps license. Are they the same thing on the agenda?
Different year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got you, 2020. Fair enough, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion for these licenses.
Move to approve.
All right. Councillor Kraus, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deech. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is to approve the 2020 annual renewal of group dental insurance, number 023772, with Emeritus Life Insurance Corporation.
So...
Ooh, councillor Nelson. And do we have a second?
Second then.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second for the dental insurance. Any discussion? Ken, I assume that this is routine annual stuff?
Yeah, it's just representing the fee increases that you see on the, in the chart on the page. So, there's just nominal fee increases because of annual cost of living increases.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have a resolution authorization for, to execute Minnesota Department of Transportation grant agreement 1035759 for airport improvements excluding land acquisition. City administrator, you want to give us background on this one?
This is a recommendation from the Airport Commission. This would be awarding a grant and authorizing it from the city. We're partners with Koochin County in the Airport Commission, and so this would be an authorization to move forward with the project. And, you know, there's a, four phases involved in the airport runway reconstruction project, so this is the phase that would include work that's being awarded and, and done next year through September of 2024. Probably important to note that, you know, with all these grant projects, the federal government pays 95% of the expenses in general, eligible expenses, and then the local share. Sometimes we, we combine the local share with the state. The state contributes some funds, and then the city and the county split the remaining share. So, this particular grant is for the federal share being just under 95%. It's 94.83%. The local is the 5.17%.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Yes, I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councillor Deech, discussion? Ken, I have a weird question. What happens in the event that as we've, we've moved forward so far with the airport project? What happens if we just quit saying yes to the, to the, um, the fees and the, the grants and everything? What ends up happening then? I mean, I can imagine it would be absolutely horrible, but I'm just wondering what actually would happen?
Well, it would be a difficult prospect for the total improvements that need to be done. And, and again, because it's done, it's being done in phases at FAA's recommendation. Part of that, I think, is the funding availability, but also to afford us to leave the runway or to allow us to have commercial air service when we're doing the primary runway, because it's going to be closed for three to four months. I mean, the two people on the Airport Commission would be a little bit more informed than I would be about that. But because of that work, we're expanding the taxiway, which is going to do double duty during the construction of the main runway as the runway. So, the advantage of that is we'll maintain commercial air service the whole time that, that main runway, the center of the main runway is being reconstructed. If we were to move forward with this particular phase and not do the middle one, we'd have a taxiway that was sized to handle, uh, takeoff aircraft as well as landing aircraft, and then not do the main runway, which would be problematic because the runway needs reconstruction. So, I, I, my sense is, is that because we've kind of done this, and we've kind of agreed to do this in phases, is that we really should feel compelled to move forward with that. So, that would be my opinion, but...
Well, and, and I think that's the point that I really wanted to get out, is there are, we've, we've had conversations in our community that, you know, we have this really nice airport, and why do we have such a nice airport for being a small community? And the reality is, is we, we're planning for our future. And we, we, we have an amazing corporation right across the street that utilizes that. We have people that are flying in from all over the world to use, utilize the international status of our airport to clear customs. And, you know, we, this train's left the station. You know, we can, we can be frustrated in some capacity that we, we have put so much money into this airport, but at this point, we're committed. We're committed for the next couple of years, and when this is done, we're going to have a very nice airport, and we're going to have opportunity that comes with that. a very nice airport, and we're going to have opportunity that comes with having an international designation for airport. So my point wasn't to try to figure out, hey, how are we going to get out of this? And the point is that we're, we're doing this, and this is an investment in our future. This is an investment in the community. And the naysayers of the airport, I can understand your concern and the plights, but with that being said, this is an investment that we've made in our community, and moving forward, this is, this is what we're doing.
To me, I add that if you could have a chance to buy something for somebody else paying 95% of it, we would be foolish not to be doing it. And the city actually ends up with 2.5% of the whole project.
Right.
And the rest is all federal dollars that we're, we're proving it with, so.
Absolutely. So that was, that was my point of the conversation. I, I, I hope that it didn't come out that we should back out.
No, and Mayor, if I could just add, you know, one of the things that we should really feel very fortunate about is we're, we're, geographically, we're fairly remote, so air service is really instrumental for us to, as you said, we're trying to invest in our future. And there's certain businesses that really look for locations to have their business so that they can take advantage of contractors and professional workers and services that need to come in and even service your business or your industry, so they can do that with the airport and do that much more affordably and economically than without one. The other thing that's very, not unique, but International Falls is only one of four airports in the whole state that has international status and custom service. So for the size of our community, having that custom service and being an international or a location that can process international flights is really an opportunity for us.
Absolutely. Any other discussion on, on the airport improvements and the grant? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the approval for the purchase of a striker of 4G modems in the amount of $2,892 to update the Fisco, Fizzo?
Fizio.
Fizio monitors in international, or in ambulances payable from the ambulance fund 201.
So move.
All right. Counselor Bowler, do we have a second?
Yep.
Counselor Kraus, we have a motion and second to approve for those modems. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have an add to the agenda, which is our appoint, my appointments for the Charter Commission. I lost those. There they are. Ken, do you, oh, great. Ken, do you want to just give a background on, on how we got to making the appointments this evening and why we're making the appointments this evening?
Well, thank you, Mayor. The Charter Commission has been inactive for the last year or two, and we have several members that their terms have expired or they're not able to serve any longer. So there's a couple of different ways which we can submit names for appointment to the Charter Commission, and one way is through the city council. The statute allows the city council to make recommended appointments, and then the chief judge of this district would receive those recommendations, and ultimately, it's the judge's responsibility to make those appointments. The city attorney assisted, assisted us back in 2018 to do that for 2019. And so, Mayor, you had, we had gone through a process and sought interested persons that would like to serve on our various boards and commissions to submit applications, and you entertained those or reviewed those, and you're making the recommendation to appoint several people to the vacancies that we have in the Charter Commission. They're included on the second page of the attachment that we have here. I did include a copy of Minnesota Statutes 410, which talks about commission appointments, and it does recognize that the city council or the Charter Commission or individual persons can petition to have appointments to the Charter Commission. But again, it's the chief judge that makes those appointments. So I think you're asking the city council to consider your recommended names, and if the council consents to that, then we would forward that to the chief judge for his consideration to make the appointments effective next year.
Okay. So just a little background before we take a motion to appoint this. I did go through all of the people after we had seeked applicants through the media, both the radio and the newspaper. I also reached out to people that had applied for the position of Counselor at Large, because I think we all found that the, the pool of people that applied for that were very, very good and interested in our future. And I also reached out to individuals as I talked, and I saw people in, in our community that would be good to fill those positions as well. My one piece that, um, I felt was an issue with the board that we had is it wasn't representative of our actual community. We had 15 members on that board, and 13 of them were older men of, you know, just older. And I felt that we needed to get a good mix of both men and women on those boards. I also felt that we needed to have age diversity. I thought we needed to have a real look of what our city actually looks like when we have citizens looking at our board. I also made the choice that I wasn't going to appoint city employees. We have had city employees that were on there in the past, and I don't think that, that's a fair assessment of our community either. And finally, I, I reached out to past city councilors because I thought, who better to know some of the issues of the city council of our community than people that had worked under the restraints of our city charter? So I did reach out to past city councilors as well to try to get the most well-balanced amount of people on our board that can review our city charter and come up with the changes that we need, need to move into the next era of International Falls. We, that's all I'm going to say until we have a motion and a second. So I would entertain a motion for the following personnel. I, I get passionate about this. I'm not kidding around. This is like big-time stuff. So the first appointment would be for past city councillor Pete Kahler, and, and all of these would be ending their term on December 31st, 2022. So Pete Kahler, Sandra Thompson, Christina Huffaker, Nikki Silvers, Ramona Johnson, Doug Franchot, Sabrina Etney, and Janelle Peterson. And then there were two that would be filling a term that is vacant at this time, and that would be Cynthia Jacksoff, where her term to end in 2020, and Dwayne Et, how do you pronounce your last name?
Etienne.
Etienne. And that ends in December 31st, 2020. So these are the names that I had came up with through literally the last month of work trying to get these names. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those names.
I'll make the motion to go with the mayor's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion or a second by Counselor Nelson. Discussion? Okay, so the only other thing I wanted to say is I did reach out to some people in our community that are really, really good, and they are not incredibly active in a lot of stuff. And that's what I'd like to see, people that are really good in their business life, really good at what they do, but haven't taken that step into community service or civil governance. And I think that this is a way of getting some people that historically have done really good things in their personal and their business lives, just stepping out to be able to do a little bit more for their community, and that's why I came up with the names that we have. That's it.
Thank you for your effort.
Thank you. You're the best, too.
He says a lot of, "Thank you."
He didn't say we're the best. He said, "Thank you."
Oh. So, any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Any other business to come before us this evening? Bang, y'all. All right, so then we'll go to reports of boards, committees, department heads. City Administrator?
Mayor, real quickly, the, as the council's aware, there was a school threat today, so the school district had worked with law enforcement and emergency management personnel and had evacuated the school for the day. Our, we've had police department and fire department personnel on site as well, and that's where the fire chief is at the moment, so he couldn't be here for the meeting, but I just wanted the council to be aware of that. The school has brought all the appropriate authorities' involvement in there, and they're doing some investigation, and, and I have not seen that, I haven't received any report today about what the school's decided about holding school tomorrow, but we expect to hear that for sure by tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Um, I believe I informed the council, maybe at a committee of the whole meeting, but we did get notification from the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission that our letter of intent that I prepared for them to try and get federal transportation alternatives grant monies was approved, so now we, we can move forward and actually prepare a, an application to the federal government. That application is due January 3rd, and I received today the documentation that needs to be put together and then resubmitted to them with, and so I'll be working on that with our public works staff and, and other department heads as necessary, so I'll keep the council advised about that.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council met with the city administrator, and we're working to conclude the annexation that was approved here a while ago, and hopefully we'll have that concluded soon. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any department heads? Todd? Okay. All right. Police-fire monthly report was in with your packet. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. In all, in all of your boxes, I had dropped off a unofficial notation of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, now to be referred to as the Cow Meeting. So all of that, all of the board, or all of our internal committees has a workload there. So if you guys would like to set up your meetings and let the city administrator know when you guys will meet, I will do everything in my power to try to be there as well so that we can coordinate on some of these things. There's also information in there that if you would like to request to have department heads, or if you need someone to come in from outside the city to make those arrangements to try to get the right information so we can move some of these projects forward that have sat stale for a little while. Besides that, I don't have anything, my, I always have stuff. I did have one very, very, very unique opportunity this last week. On November 14th, I was invited by servants of shelter to walk through their facility. As we were kind of talking a little bit a while, a while back about our homeless situation in our community, I think we all have a stereotypical idea of what homeless looks like. And I'm going to tell you that you can take those stereotypical thoughts of what homeless looks like in our community, and you can throw those away. These are amazing people that have had situations that have happened in their life that have caused them to be in a situation where they needed help. And these are very strong men and women, and I do repeat, men and women, that have found themselves in a situation that they were strong enough to say that they needed help, and they have lots of different ways that they ended up getting the help. Some were referred to by the county, some were called 211 and were referred by that situation, and other ones had, had seeked out servants of shelter, and some had talked with Salvation Army. Any way that it happened, they ended up getting into a position that they were able to get help by this organization. They do have a facility here in our community, which is amazingly confidential, and I did not know where it was until I was given the address to go and meet with these people. These are amazing people that have had bad things happen or have just had a series of things happen that put them in the situation. They are working in our community. They are volunteering at, at local organizations, and they are able to have their kids go to school without the stigma of they have something going on. It was hands down the most powerful day I have had on the city council, not necessarily in this seat, but on city council. I had the opportunity to meet our new journalist at, at the paper, and Hannah Olson will be writing an article about both the people that are there with the, with, without using names and, and trying to be as, as coy on, on the stories that they are. But we have amazing people in our community. We have an amazing organization that is helping people, and the people that they are helping are giving everything they can to get out of the situations that they're in. And so I, I just got to say that it was, it was a very deeply powerful day for me. And then after that, I spoke about Kmart. So Paul, my second issue is also on the 14th. Paul Nevinan and I, along with Kida member Mike Hansen, had another phone conversation with Woodmont Company. Things are moving forward with Kmart. They have already started setting up some contracts with local contractors to do work out there. One of the things that they want to do immediately is as soon as Kmart is out of the building, they want to make sure that it's, it's upgraded and structurally sound, make sure that any leaks, anything that's wrong with the building gets serviced immediately. And they have every intention in the spring to redo the parking lot out there. They are getting, they are getting a lot of interest from companies. I really don't know if I have, I don't have any names regardless, but they are getting lots of interest from outside areas that would like to come in for retail in International Falls. So that is a huge positive that we have moving forward, that they're already looking at fixing the building and getting the parking lot ready. So that's the two things that really stuck out on my, my last two weeks, so. Anybody else have anything? I really thought this was going to be a fast meeting. Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, as you mentioned, the servants of shelter, I mean, that we, yeah, I just wanted to add that small town tech is going to donate the laptop, and I know that I'm working on that to, it will donate that to the servants of shelter so that people can use that to serve the internet and, you know, apply for jobs and, you know, mail, etc. So, like, your story, just you're going to be a bad, so.
You're the best, Todd. Now.
Small town tech gives.
Counselor Bowler, you're like the second best now, because Todd just moved into the lead. Yep. It happens. That's how fast it happens around here. All right. One more opportunity for audience. Does anyone in the audience have anything to bring forward? All right. So in your packets, you had correspondence from, from the Department of Health and the ARDC participation letter and the Library Board of Trustees. We do have a special city council meeting tomorrow at 6:30 after the variance meeting with the. We do have a special city council meeting tomorrow at 6:30 after the variance meeting with the board. What, what's the committee? I'm not even trying to be that guy. It's not the Planning Commission. It's the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yep.
So 5:30 tomorrow, there's a Zoning Board of Appeals meeting right here. We have a 6:30 special city council meeting. And then we have our specials, or our regular city council meeting on December 2nd. We have a budget and levy meeting on December 2nd. And right after that, we're going to have a Planning Commission public hearing on the comprehensive plan. It is going to be a hoot on December 2nd. Come on in. We have nothing else. This meeting is adjourned.